Good evening. Today is September 12th, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to all those you in the audience here and watching in line. Director Marissa, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Director, I'll second it by Director Hume. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Tonight, starting off with the information part of our meeting, we will have a summer program report from Jason Sellers, Director of Community Services; Allison Jordan, the Community Education Supervisor; and Courtney Jackson-Floback, Youth Services, ALC and Credit Recovery Coordinator. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. We're really excited to be here this evening. We have a very data-packed slideshow to present to you. One of the things that I want to highlight is that in community education, we have a lot of employees that work year-round, but we also have a lot of staff in K-12 that also choose to come and work in the summer to support students and to support families. And hopefully, the data that you see tonight will bear the fruits of that labor.
So now I turn it over to Supervisor Allison Jordan.
Good evening, School Board Chair Miller, Dr. Battle and School Board members, and those in the audience and joining us from home. I am Allison Jordan, the Supervisor of Community Education. Thank you for allowing us to present the information about summer programming. I'd like to thank everyone who worked this summer to support our community. Your patience and dedication is vital to the summer program, and here is an overview of the presentation we will be sharing tonight. Our district core values are reflected in our summer programming in many ways. We wanted to provide you with an opportunity to see how these core values are highlighted in summer programming. These are the spaces that we utilize during the 2024 summer program. The numbers in parentheses represent the numbers of participants at each site. Summer programming in ISD 191 reaches every age demographic in our community. Every summer, we offer opportunities for enrichment for both youth and adults. Jennifer Green, Kristi Myers, and I work hard to build partnerships and to find opportunities for the 191 community. The Adult Basic Education Program under the leadership of Students Edmondson had another successful summer. ABE had 350 students taking classes this summer. Those students generated 3,955 hours of learning. Offering programming all throughout the summer to families in our community provides an impact we are proud to share. Our reach this summer included 3,686 students who took advantage of community education programming. This number is down from last summer, and there are many reasons for this. One of those is ESER funds. During the summer of 2022 and 2023, we were able to use ESER funds to provide free youth enrichment classes. Our 191 families are learning to adjust to this change. Another reason why our numbers decreased this past summer was the loss of the U+ grant that offered districts' second and third graders an opportunity to take part in STEM enrichment classes for free of charge as well. On the other hand, the Edge summer programming for students in grades 6 through 9 saw an increase in participation in their fee-based programming. All of the pictures that you see on the screen represent the students who participated in summer enrichment activities offered through Community Ed this summer. Each summer, we look to find ways to be innovative with our summer programming and to build a financially responsible and sustainable model that will provide quality opportunities for the families and students in ISD 191. This summer, we had to think differently about our kindergarten Jump Start program. In previous summers, this program has received funding through a grant. This summer, we held kindergarten Jump Start at Sky Oaks along with students who had just completed kindergarten and first grade. For the first time, we were able to claim our kindergarten Jump Start students for reimbursement if they were enrolled as a VPK student during the 23-24 school year. By having this revenue stream, we were able to cover items such as staff wages, materials and supplies, field trips, and other expenses. This is a model we will continue to use in order to provide a quality six-week summer experience that provides our incoming kindergarteners with academic and social-emotional learning before they enter kindergarten in the fall. Our middle school students were given the opportunity this summer to participate in half-day sessions at The Garage. The Garage is a music and video production studio located in the Burnsville City Center. Each Wednesday, our 6th and 7th grade students attended a morning or afternoon learning session. At the end of the summer, the students held a showcase to share their work and creations. We continue to partner with The Garage during the school year with middle school after-school programming called BYC. Maria Starkey, our pre-K through first-grade art specialist, hosted a glow-in-the-dark art show for families during the last week of summer school. Artwork the students created throughout the summer was spotlighted using black lights to make a one-of-a-kind art show experience. Alternative Learning Center, or ALC, programs are called extended-year programs. They fall under Minnesota State statute requiring a continuous learning plan known as a CLP. Programs at Sky Oaks, Nicolet, and Burnsville High School must have a CLP with stated goals. Families and students have to sign the CLP as a partnership with summer learning. We are constantly looking at student data in our current curriculum to improve summer school. This slide provides the data for math. As you can see, many grade levels experienced a double-digit increase in math growth. This summer for middle school, we were fortunate enough to be able to hire two math teachers. These math teachers were able to use the pre-assessment data to group students to really look at the needs of our summer school students. The increase at both of these levels in the areas of math is outstanding. This growth shows the hard work not only by the teachers and staff who focused on math this summer, but also the students who were willing to engage in learning to improve their skills. Our literacy data is shown here. The data shows positive increase across all grade levels. In the last two years, we have hired a librarian during the summer to allow the students the opportunity to check out books on a weekly basis. We have also partnered with Pebble Go to have access to eBooks over the summer that are above and beyond what students have access to during the school year. This year, many of our kindergarten and first-grade teachers implemented HEGARDY as part of the summer school literacy instruction. We are excited that many of our grade levels again made double-digit growth in literacy. Our data across all of our summer school offerings, pre-K through grade 12, suggests we run quality summer programming that supports students both academically as well as socially emotionally. We feel the hands-on project-based learning, experiential learning, and time spent outside is really the recipe during summer where we experience the success. The data coming out of our ISD 191 VPK continues to amaze us. Our students make incredible gains during the school year, and this summer, we saw these continued gains in all areas. Our kindergarten Jump Start team has reviewed and revised the curriculum this summer to match what kindergarten-through-seventh-grade staff members use. We have worked with Dr. Lowe to collect data about our students who attend our VPK programs during the school year. In the years after VPK, up to grade three, students who attended VPK in District 191 outperformed their peers on A reading, A math, and MCA assessments. We are excited to see the data on these students as they progress through our school communities in the coming years.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Miller, members of the board, and Dr. Battle. My name is Courtney Jackson-Floback. As you may be familiar, BHS is the home to two credit-bearing programs during the summer: 9th through 12th grade Credit Recovery Program and the 8th grade STEM Success Academy. Where the 9th through 12th grade Credit Recovery Program is used as a resource for students that are credit deficient, the 8th grade Success Program is focused on providing students with familiarity of the high school, allowing them support of teachers in the areas of high school-level reading and writing, and lastly, to push and assist students in the desire to become leaders within their school community through volunteerism and leadership. This year, our STEM program students participated in an amazing mural service project which allowed our incoming 9th grade students to leave their mark on a strong 191 community. In addition, BHS also offers students the opportunity to recover credits during the school day with our Credit Recovery Day and after-school programming. As you'll see in the next slides, this programming has been a successful and vital program for student achievement and graduation. As previously stated, BHS offers students the opportunity to recover credits during the school day with our Credit Recovery Day and after-school programs, and in the summer with our 9th through 12th grade summer program. Here are some amazing statistics that demonstrate the success of our programming and the dedication of our district in supporting that success. Through our Credit Recovery Day and after-school programming, 153 of 169 senior students graduated in 2024. During our Credit Recovery Program, we had 44 graduates between BOSS, BHS, and Virtual Academy. That all said, 197 students graduated this year because of credit recovery. Based on the 457 students who graduated from Burnsville High School this summer, 43% of the total number of graduates were assisted by credit recovery programming.
This summer, we added some new partnerships as well as continued to work with existing partnerships to bring high-quality experiences to the 191 community. Many of these organizations partner with community education year-round. At the end of our programming, we ask families for feedback. Here are some of the comments we received about programming that took place this summer. Staff feedback is equally as important. We use this feedback to evaluate what is working and identify areas of improvement. Many of the staff who work for our summer programs return to work in subsequent summers. Due to the success of our summer programming, many of our summer staff also find employment beyond summer in ISD 191. This summer, we were able to incorporate many student supports, offering opportunities for personalized learning. Something that we are very proud of is our AmeriCorps volunteers. Of our four volunteers who served in the summer of 2023, all of them returned in the summer of 2024 to volunteer again. In addition to AmeriCorps volunteers, we also provide multilingual special education and intervention staff during our summer programs. We feel by having these additional staff members working with our students in the summer, we are better preparing our students to enter our 191 schools in the fall. As we plan for the summer of 2025, our continuous improvement cycle includes refining and revising our training for non-licensed staff members, looking for innovative experiences to be outside in the summer with our students, intentional communication between staff members and summer school families, streamlining the process for notification and acceptance into summer programming. This is a request from families in order to help them better plan out their summers, and attending the National Summer Learning Association Annual Conference in Washington, DC. This opportunity would allow us to connect with other leaders and innovators in summer programming, and we feel it's valuable in making the summer experience in 191 flourish, continue to flourish, and thrive. Finally, a huge thank you to all of those who supported over the 3,600 participants in programming through community education this summer. We'd like to thank Jason Sellers, the Director of Community Services; Dave Lake, the Director of Operations; Julie Cronibetter, the Director of Food Services; Rachel Gorton, the Director of Technology; and John O'Loughlin, Operations and Transportation Supervisor. Also, we would like to thank Directors Pietrowski and Oftedal, Jennifer Mittendorf, Kristi Wanzak, and Dana Thompson for the collaboration this summer; and our core ALC team for their leadership, especially Hamdi Dawood, Etika Ontiveros, Mari Sella-Dale, Ardo Ibrahim, Nauma Adan, and Ruthann Maseter, who are integral to the success of our ALC summer programming. We also thank the ALC summer school team that taught. We truly value and appreciate them more than they will ever know. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any comments or questions?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and I always enjoy hearing about all the summer programming that we have and the opportunities that our students have over the summer to enhance their learning. You had mentioned the decline in enrollment due to the cost because of the ESER funds no longer being available. What, is there anything we have in place to, like scholarships, or things to assist with cost? Just wondering, like, what do we have out there to assist anyone that might see that as a barrier to where we could possibly increase the enrollment?
So, Community Ed does offer a 15% discount off of community classes. We do request the application of educational benefits as proof of that need. So we do offer one per catalog cycle for families. We also, I really did try to work with vendors to kind of keep pricing in line with what it was last summer to help provide for those opportunities and not make it be an exorbitant expense for families who, again, haven't paid for it for two years.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Director.
Thank you Chair Miller. It's really an all-hands-on-deck program, just very clear from the report. And thank you all for bringing that forward, especially the data. It's a four-day program, summer, per week.
This summer, it was a four-day program. We have worked with other models. We have found a lot of success with staffing with a four-day model and being able to provide a three-day weekend for our staff.
That was going to be my question, just some sort of comment on a comparison between the two. Thank you. Just a comment on the social-emotional piece and, you know, the investment and the efforts to help grow social-emotional learning for our students at such an early age. It's only going to benefit them through the kindergarten Jump Start program. I just really appreciated seeing the growth data that you provide. And a request, I'll reiterate a request from last time. I don't believe it's for you guys. I believe it's for Dr. Battle. Allison, you had mentioned, you know, looking forward to seeing how summer student, summer school students progress through our system. I would really love to see, you know, a breakdown of the cohort analysis to be able to understand where we're strong and where there are other opportunities.
So I do have an answer for that. The district has just moved from, I'm trying to blink, viewpoint to edu-climber. There is training that is being done. I did sit down with Dr. Lowe to gather the data for pre-kindergarten through 7th grade. I have a feeling we overloaded the system. And so I think we need to, he and I need to back up and look at it in grade-level chunks instead of across a broader K7 system because we did pull data from 2021, and we were starting to dive into that when I think there was a glitch. And so he and I will back up, and we will provide that data for you in the next board report that we do.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And I'll respond to that really quickly as well. Some of you were here, and you recall when I was running Area Learning Center Programming, and we brought data around BYC and PALS students in our Extended-Day Targeted Services Model. And what we found with those students overwhelmingly was that students who attended PALS, after-school programming at the elementary school, and BYC at the middle school, they outperformed their peers on MCA's year-over-year. And so our suspicion, of course, is, given the Jump Start data and some of the other data, that, of course, we believe that they will probably outperform their peers with less of that summer learning loss than they typically would have.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just had one comment and one question. As others have said, I think these programs are fantastic. I think sometimes people outside of this building perhaps would think that nothing happens in schools during the summer, and I think this report shows that is very much not true. So thank you for all the work that went in this summer. My actual question is, you have the great data around the math and reading literacy improvements. Is there a ballpark on how many students were in those, were tested in those specific programs? There was like 3,600 that were in the total program, but I'm sure they weren't all in the reading and the literacy and math programs.
This summer, K, so pre-K kindergarten Jump Start had 125 students. The K5 had about 850 students. And then 6-7, we had roughly 120 students.
So that's a pretty high number. So hopefully, we'll, as we're also saying, maybe hopefully we'll start to see some of that growth on other testing and such in the future. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a clarifying question, actually. Thank you to all of you for presenting this. It has a lot of very informative information. I just have maybe a clarifying question. So the kindergarten Jump Start, the eligibility is not just for those that attended VPK? It's more broader?
It is open to everyone.
Okay.
We did offer it to the students who attended VPK in the 2023-24 school year, but we did accept students who did not attend VPK to have that experience as well.
So I'll add to that, what we found and the way that we're able to generate revenue in a little, small, so was it Section 8 document that they use for reporting, is that if students have generated ADM the year before, then they can generate ADM, then they can generate ADM and ALC in the summer, while VPK students generate .6 unfortunately instead of 1.0 ADM during the school year. So the students that we can generate ADM off of, the current VPK students that are in classes right now this year, they'll all be invited, if we can staff it, to next summer's Jump Start. We will try to invite and get as many students who weren't in VPK to come and join for that Jump Start experience, but they would be what we would sort of call free riders. And so, at least at that Jump Start level, we may in fact lose there, but in other places, we may gain, and we hope that it all balances out in the end. And we look at those numbers constantly. So it is technically the students that are currently in VPK classes that are eligible to generate revenue in the summer only.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'd like to reiterate our thanks, and we know the amount of effort goes into not only running these programs, but preparing this report. So thank you very much for coming and joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will receive a summer projects update from Dave Lake, our Director of Operations, Property and Transportation.
Board Chair Miller, Directors and Superintendent Battle, good evening. I would like to share some of the many construction projects that have taken place over the summer months. Starting with Burnsville High School, we undertook a south parking lot milling and reclamation project. The student lot at the front of our property received new asphalt and striping, shown in the picture. We also refinished the wood flooring in the main and Activity Center gyms, which encompassed six basketball courts. The Activity Center gym was repainted, and we also completed many exterior resealing projects on the building. For the high school's cooling systems, mechanical updates and upgrades took place on our HVAC units as well as the main cooling tower. We also replaced several outdated water heaters with a high-efficiency, tankless water heater system. Outside the building, additional work was done. Just to the east of Pates Stadium, the football practice field was rebuilt and restored. Drainage corrections were completed by the tennis courts, and a new walkway was added. New pavers were placed outside the baseball field, and landscaping was completed. At Diamond Head Education Center, a second phase was completed working with Jason Sellers, Director of Community Ed, at the lower playground outside of the community education. Newport-in-place surfacing was installed, and additional features were added for student play and learning. We were also in the process of replacing the playground fencing, which will be wrapped up this month. Lower-level interior updates, new carpeting, and painting took place in the community education and enrollment spaces. In addition, painting was completed in the, in other classrooms and spaces around the building. HVAC and cooling systems were updated, and a new rooftop compressor was installed. Our largest construction project this year was at Eagle Ridge Middle School. The building was taken offline for most activities so that we could replace the original cooling system with 8DX, which means direct expansion, condensing units, and new cooling coils. We also used this opportunity to update the building automation system. I'm happy to report that the building was fully air-conditioned for the start of the school year, although it was close. Several classrooms and spaces were repainted, and classroom furniture was changed out to freshen up the classroom environment. Similar to sites throughout the district, several new security cameras, video servers, and other systems were added in common spaces to provide additional security. At Gideon Pond Elementary School, I walked, I worked with Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services, and Principal Salma Hussain to identify a classroom and build a new restroom space to meet the needs of special ed student programming. At Gideon Pond, we also added mechanical updates, completed those. We replaced the building water heater and performed replacement on the boiler header valves. At Vista View Elementary, the gym and the cafeteria spaces received a fresh, fresh paint. I worked with Dr. Angie Poehl, and we added striping and gym consistent with school colors and the school mascot. Sidewalk work and repairs were completed, and we also finished year two of exterior ceiling work to maintain the life of the building. As we did at several other locations, a new building water heater was installed. District-wide, many other notable construction projects were completed. All of our parking lots were swept and restriped to maintain curb appeal and draw attention to existing safety features. Sidewalks were repaired, and we performed throughout the district, worked with emphasizing replacing worn-out cement slabs and correcting any potential trip hazards. Several roof repairs were completed to address nuisance leaks and deteriorating systems. Classroom updates took place at Eagle Ridge Middle, Gideon Pond Elementary, Nicolet Middle, and William Byrne Elementary. I worked with Dr. Kathy Funston, Director of Strategic Partnerships and Pathways, and Dr. Carolyn Alston, Nicolet Principal, this spring to install a rain garden and bioretention pond at Nicolet Middle School. Through Dr. Funston's efforts, she secured a $50,000 grant from Dakota County Soil and Water Conservation District. Computer glitch here. It's going to turn off on me. There we go. Worked with Hershey, secured a grant through the Dakota County Soil and Water Conservation District to cover much of the overall expense. One last exciting project I want to share with you is that we will be installing new building monument signs at Sky Oaks Elementary and Vista View Elementary this fall. Special thank you to our building principals, Dr. Angie Poehl and Dr. Renee Bradner, for working with their teams to generate a design consistent with district branding and messaging. Thank you for inviting me to share.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? Director, go ahead, please.
Thank you Chair Miller. Just a question and perhaps a comment. You mentioned roofing repairs. Where is Diamond Head with that?
So Diamond Head, we had that on, much like Sky Oaks, we had Diamond Head on the 10-year plan.
Yep.
Fortunately, after having contractors come out and survey the sites, we found that we didn't need to replace the roofing. So we were able to push that back several years. Both are out of warranty, but both of them are in good working shape. So luckily, we don't have to do those million-dollar-plus projects. luckily, we don't have to do those million-dollar-plus projects at this time. We can use it elsewhere.
Yeah, looking at the LTFM, it's always a daunting item to see.
Takes a good chunk of that.
Yeah. I'm glad to know that we're still in good shape there. And just a thank you for, you know, the progressive update of the signs throughout the district so that we have, you know, similar appearance and welcomes for welcoming for our, for our families.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to receive a report from Maryam Bradai, our new student board representative.
Hello. Thank you. So I wanted to start off by talking about how we started our year off strong with a successful fire muster parade, which included many friendly faces from Burnsville High School, such as the Theater Guild, Burnsville Strong, and many of our sports clubs, including swim, basketball, cheer, baseball, football, and cross-country ski. Another thing I wanted to talk about was how Link Crew welcomed in incoming freshmen last Tuesday, where our upperclassmen helped with team building and high school prepping activities like name games, team juggling, and school tours. We had about one hundred and forty Link Crew leaders this year, and new for this year, Link Crew leaders will be reconnecting with their Linkies every week, excuse me, every month in advisory to help them through their freshman year. I'd also like to talk about National Honor Society and applications for incoming juniors closed this Tuesday, and there will be an induction ceremony for the new National Honor Society members on the thirtieth of this month. Youth in government also had their explore night this Tuesday, which let students know how they could learn about government through a firsthand four-day experience at the Capitol in January. More details will be announced at the first delegation meeting on September seventeenth. The Theater Guild is also kicking off season sixty-four with Mean Girls. Auditions were open this week and callbacks came out today. Show details for Mean Girls are scheduled for early November, and the Theater Guild kickoff meeting is for September twenty-third. As for sports, the fall sports season started up in August with football, volleyball, girls' soccer, girls' tennis, swim and dive, the fall dance team, and boys' soccer. This is a big one I wanted to talk about, but the new phone policy is at Burnsville High School. So essentially, this new phone rule, otherwise known as away for the day, is a system where students keep their phones away during classes but are free to use them during passing time, lunch, before, and after school. Students I've talked into are generally, generally understanding of this new cell phone rule, with the exception of, of its extension into study hall. Many of my peers have expressed that study hall is their free time to choose what they would like to work on or not work on, and often, a break including the use of phones is helpful. The consideration of a phone-welcome study hall system would be appreciated. I'd also like to talk about homecoming week and how marching band will be playing the next homecoming game next Friday. The Blazette Dance Team will be touring and performing on Friday, the twentieth, at Nicollet Middle School and Eagle Ridge Middle School, and then will come back to prepare for the homecoming game performance. We will also be having a pep fest assembly on Monday, which will be showcasing school sports and spirit. The homecoming game is the twentieth at Burnsville versus Hopkins at five, and the homecoming dance is the next day, the twenty-first, first, at the Burnsville Activity Center from seven PM to ten PM. That's all I have for the start of September.
Thank you for your report. Next, we'll have a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Board Chair Miller and members of the board, and welcome everyone to a new school year. As is tradition, I'm going to start with a little information about how the school year has started for us, and also, as we usually do, we're going to share some wonderful photos of our amazing students, staff, and families on the first days of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So last week, as you see on September third, thousands of our students made their way to school in person, whether on buses, with their parents, riding their bikes, or walking. It is always wonderful to see them arrive at our schools greeting their friends and teachers. You get to see friends reunited as well as renewing of relationships between staff and students. It is such a tremendous testament to the community we live in and that we are always trying to strengthen. One of the great ways we build community at our secondary schools is by making the first day for sixth and ninth grade students only with orientation with our wonderful web leaders, as well as our Link Crew leaders leading team-building activities. Students in grades seven and eight, as well as ten to twelve, learned remotely on Tuesday and returned on person on Wednesday. Kindergarten students, along with first-grade students, for the first time this year, participated in family connection meetings on September third and fourth, so their first full day of school was Thursday, September fifth. We believe this change will strengthen the relationships between teachers, students, and families. And we have some students who learn remotely all year long in 191. Our 191 Virtual Academy started its third year of being a fully-formed and standalone school for students in grades K through twelve. There are always some kinks to be worked out as we start our school year, but I'm amazed by our professional staff who make things work for students, staff and families. This includes our transportation partners, Smitty and Sons, our custodial team that makes sure buildings are clean and safe, our technology team who worked tirelessly this summer to prepare the thousands of devices for students and staff, our food and nutrition services team, which once again is making breakfast and lunch available to every single student every day at no cost to students and families. It's a tremendous amount of work, but it makes all the difference. Oh, look at our web leaders. Look at them. Another team that does amazing work behind the scenes is our human resources department. Summer is definitely not a downtime for them, as we welcomed over two hundred new staff members since the end of last year, including about ninety new teachers and licensed staff. I will tell you, we still have openings, especially for educational assistant and food service positions. Please look into entering our wonderful, becoming part of a wonderful 191 family. In August, both in my State of the District address and my welcome back message to staff, I'm focusing on partnerships. You heard earlier from our summer school programming, the, the multiple partnerships that help us provide these opportunities for students. We are always at our best when we work together. And so, that's what I've saw, what I've seen on the first days of schools, people from throughout the community and the district coming together to ensure that we are welcoming and energizing places for students to learn and grow. We are truly 191. While that concludes my report on the first day of school, I have one more item to add. The Minnesota School Boards Association has set September as Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, setting aside this month to recognize the hard work and incredibly important contributions of school board members. Now, you may recall that in February, we honored our board members. So they moved it now to September. So it's true, we've already recognized you this school year, but it's worth celebrating again your contributions. It really is the sacrifices you make. I cannot thank you enough for your guidance and your leadership. And as representatives of the entire community, you really set the vision and direction for our district. You assure accountability when it comes to student achievement and fiscal management. You undertake a tremendous amount of work studying education issues broadly, political issues, issues that affect our communities, and you make difficult decisions that impact the lives of thousands of staff members, students, and families. I want to say that we are especially fortunate in here 191 to have board members who work closely and respectfully with each other. You honor the expertise of each other and staff members, and you are truly, truly dedicated to doing what is best for our students and families. So behalf, on behalf of all, of everyone in our district, I want to thank you for your service. Wonderful 191 Board of Education. And now that concludes my report. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Well, thank you very much. As a board member and a parent, thank you very much to you and your entire staff that my day, first day of school, I was able to just work and not be interrupted with complications or texts or any kind of stuff. It went well. So that's always a good sign for the year. All's to dad. Now, do board members have any reports they wish to share? I'll just remind that we have our committee reports scheduled for our September twenty-sixth. Any other reports outside of committee reports? Director Al?
Even though it relates to my committee assignment, it's actually participation. This past weekend, I, along with Director Hume, Director Connor, and Dr. Battle, had the pleasure of participating in the annual Burnsville Festival and Fire Muster. Friday night, Director Hume, Director Connor, and I welcomed our community to festival grounds as gate greeters. Saturday morning, Director Hume, Dr. Battle, and I walked the parade. Fire departments from across Minnesota, as well as from Chicago and New York, joined our community this weekend. I was proud to be able to honor our first responder heroes who sacrifice and serve our community each day. The festival boasted a variety of food trucks, representative of local cuisines, and the multicultural stage featured music and dance from Somalia, Ecuador, Japan, and Mexico. It was a glorious weekend to be out with neighbors. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay. That then does conclude the information part of our meeting tonight. We'll now move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda tonight? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb.
Second.
Seconded by Director Marso. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Then on to new business. The first item under new business, we are being asked to adopt a resolution to accept donations. Presenting this resolution will be Superintendent Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Miller, members of the board. Before I present the formal resolution, I wanted to say thank you to the many, to the many community organization and partners that support education in 191. I am so grateful for their support and generosity. Included in this quarter's donation report, you will find so many ways our community partners support ISD 191. So we have a donation of school supplies, backpacks, educational equipment from Greater Twin Cities United Way, the Savage Police Department, the Burnsville Savage Lions Club, Ecolab, Mount Calvary Lutheran Church, Peach Church, Peach, Peach, Peach Church, Bob Havel, and David Manthe. We also have a donation of equipment for the Culinary Pathways Program from ISD 917, Chris Devine and Marcy Levy McGuire. A back-to-school breakfast for our new educators was sponsored from George Van DeWit from One Digital, and support for our food and nutrition programs and brain power in a backpack from Bachmann's, Brinker International, and several families across the district. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to approve and accept these donations to our district in accordance with our school board policy and Minnesota statutes and to permit their use as designated by the donors.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to accept donations as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, seconded by Director Marso. Is there any discussion on the matter? Having been moved and seconded, this is a resolution that will require a roll call vote. So in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll, and when she calls your name, please respond with either an aye if you are in favor of the resolution or nay if you're opposed. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Hume?
Aye.
Chair Miller?
Aye.
Director Werb?
Aye.
Director Marso?
Aye.
Director Alt?
Aye.
This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Up next, we are being asked to approve the casual wage scale for the 2024-2025 school year. Presenting this recommendation is Stacy Sovine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each September, we do bring to you a casual wage scale. These are positions that are temporary and unique or seasonal around either sporting events, filling in for facility rental, student workers and such. These positions typically are not represented by a collective bargaining unit, so therefore, the rates can be set by the board. We have a number of changes, but overall, they are fairly minor compared to everything. A lot of this is inflationary adjustments or because we haven't changed them over time, or positions in which we are having a difficult time filling, such as substitute nursing positions as such. Also, we are adjusting our student worker amount because come January first, minimum wage goes up. So that's one of the reasons why we are doing that as well. So with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approves the proposed rates of pay for the 2024-2025 school year.
Is there a motion to approve the proposed casual wage scale?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion on the matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to approving some policies. The first policy for consideration is Policy 512, School-sponsored Student Publications and Activities. Presenting the recommendation is Aaron Tinkelberg, Director of Communications.
Thank you, Chair Miller, members of the board, and Dr. Battle. This is, as you said, Policy 512, School-sponsored Student Publications and Activities. The changes that you see in the policy primarily reflect new state law, which updates several definitions in the policy, and then more explicitly protects student free speech rights as it pertains to these school-sponsored publications. You'll notice the policy does also continue to include limits, reasonable limits on student expression, free speech expression, and inclusion of the possibility of an advisor in teaching professional journalism standards as part of those programs. The recommendation is to adopt the changes to Policy 512.
Is there a motion to approve the changes to Policy 512?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Marso. Is there any discussion on the matter? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first-reading basis, changes to Policies 425, Professional Development, 601, School-District Curriculum and Instruction Goals, 606, Instructional Resources, 620, Credit for Learning, and 624, Online Learning Options. Amina Oftedwell, Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, will be presenting the recommendations.
Thank you, Chair Hume. Chair Miller, the policies before you are, the changes are based on legislative updates. Policy 425 has added some provisions around paraprofessional training. 601 is the most substantive change. It is replacing the World's Best Workforce, which has been a guide from MDE with the language of comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. This is in response to the removal of the goal for reading by grade levels, by grade three, and being replaced by the READ Act. And so, the goals still remain for, to meet school readiness, close the achievement gap, and have all students attain college and career readiness, and graduate from high school, and has added the, the additional new piece, which is prepare students to be lifelong learners. Again, the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness replaces World's Best Workforce. And so, in many policies where that reference the World's Best Workforce, you'll see ongoing changes. 606 relates to instructional resources and, and library resources, materials. They updated the definition of media specialist and expanded that, and require that the new policy and procedures include procedures for declining to purchase or policy and procedures include procedures for declining to purchase or to receive donations for specific reasons, and guidance on weeding and removing outdated or inaccurate materials. And finally, a required report to the Minnesota Department of Education for all material challenges and reconsiderations. Policy 620, Credit for Learning, is very specific in setting dates and timelines of, for students to notify the school as to their intent to attend post-secondary enrollment options, and that notification is binding, and a requirement for post-secondary institutions to report on 10-day student absences or student withdrawal from courses. Policy 624, Online Learning, allows for schools to enter into agreements for tuition or course fees for online learning program, or courses that exceed the reimbursement amount provided by the state. It is the recommendation that you accept these changes in the first reading.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation to approve these policies?
So moved.
Moved by Director Al.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, Changes to Policies 503, Student Attendance, and 506, Student Discipline. Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, will be presenting the recommendation.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Policy 503 changes surfaced with this latest legislative session and clarified some parent roles and procedures around student excusals from absences, as well as some of the legitimate exceptions, most of which you see here. Or all of the changes aren't substantive deviations from our current practices. Most of what you see here is also just like some reorganization based on the MSBA policy and what we have as some of our local authority. And the policy was, this policy was reviewed at our Policy Review Committee on August 20th of this year. For Policy 506, Student Discipline, we also have some changes that surfaced out of the most recent legislative session, clarifications around roles and on pro and restraint, as well as clarification around unscheduled student removals. Some of the roles have to do a lot with the early session bill, clarifying the role of school resource officers, and then also delineate different other roles within our school system. Within the student removal section, we didn't, you will notice a strike through because after further deliberation, we decided not to include that in district policy, although it's still governed through statute. This policy was also reviewed on August 20th, 2024, with our Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. Sarah, there are two votes in the script. Is that just a copy paste? Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve the proposed changes to Policy 503 and 506?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Marso. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This concludes the regular portion of our business meeting. Next on our agenda is a work session to discuss the construction of a Family and Consumer Sciences FACS lab at Burnsville High School. Before starting that work session, I move that we take a brief recess and return to the dais at 7:30 to begin our work session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Al. Moved by myself, and seconded by Director Al. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Please return at 7:30.
We will begin our work session on the fax lab and BHS this evening with a presentation from Stacy Sobine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, and Dave Lake, Director of Operations, Properties and Transportation.
Thank you Chair Miller. Last year we started having conversations with staff from the high school to address a growing need to be able to provide more fax lab space. Fax lab space, what it breaks down to is our, the kitchen spaces, the little labs. We reviewed the information or the data and kind of are sharing this with you tonight as well. The culinary program has, the pathway program has had a very successful run over the past few years, actually since it started, and is growing to the point where we're not able to provide access for the students to be able to get into these labs. They have done everything they can over the past few years to have makeshift spaces where it's almost like watching the Food Network. The kids get to kind of see the instructor make the meal, but we don't actually have space for them to be doing it themselves. So, what we are coming to you tonight is with the information showing you the growth, the need, and then also kind of mapping out a timeline of what we would like to do. We'd like to add a second lab that is just mirrored on the other side of where the current one is, on the same side of the hallway. We would bring to you a proposal at the next board meeting for kind of our budget for this, to work within that. Then we also go further in and outlining what that process would look like as far as working with our architects, bringing in the folks from the high school, making sure that we have everything in place as far as the design. Award our final vendor the contract in December, and then first thing in June, we would start construction so that we're ready to schedule and use the lab come next school year, next fall. So, that is a really quick, high level type of a thing. I'm just sharing that with you and opening up for any questions which you may have.
Move to the next slide, just to show the need.
Oh, I'm sorry. He went through the whole presentation. Presentation's done, my slide person.
So really, just the board, first go back to that need.
So let's back up to the need, I'm sorry.
So, is this the second year we've had to turn away students approximately?
No, we've actually been not able to meet the needs of all students that have either registered or have used it as an alternative. You'll see that it's like, oh, well, we have more students scheduled than actually what registered in a couple of years. Well, those represent kids who also selected this as a second option. So not every schedule works out for everybody. So again, we have worked really hard at trying to get everybody in, and then some, but we have the capacity or the need for even more. And it's getting to the point where it's like, okay, this just seems silly that they're not actually in a lab and doing this stuff.
And so if we open it up to registrations again this spring, or February, it's, I think that's when we start, that's the next process, the slide, to have it start in June so we can have it ready for classes in the fall.
Yep, yep. So a number of different things that'll happen. There's a restroom that's currently between. We will modify the restroom so that it can actually be used for laundry facilities. So that's kind of, so there's a laundry room, laundry that services special ed in the next classroom, as well as all the towels and the garments and everything else for fax, the things that get dirtied up during the process. So we actually have to have a washer and dryer available. We have the plumbing right there that we can use that space, free up where the laundry is in the storage area that's behind that restroom. So that laundry stuff will come up to the front, create more storage space. Matt has a lot of stuff in a lot of places right now, so we're trying to centralize it for the actual labs. And then, so you have the one lab here, you'll have the storage and the laundry, and then the other lab will be restored on the other side.
So I have lots of questions.
All right.
My son is one that wanted to get into the program, and he could not.
Okay.
So can we go back to the first slide where it talks about the capacity? So currently, how many students are enrolled? Do we know that?
For 24, 25, we have 749 students scheduled for the fax.
Those are the ones that actually are scheduled. So when we add the lab, how many students then will that add on?
Lab access will be approximately 32 students per class period. So it'll be about another 150 plus.
Okay. So, how many did not, how many that wanted to get in? Like, is this going to fulfill?
The first choice?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the first choice again.
Not every culinary class is a lab class.
Okay.
So by adding lab access though, that helps us increase the amount of students that can actually be enrolled and go through the programming. So, is it a guarantee? At this point in time, it isn't really a guarantee that I'm going to solve everything, but with the price point and the space that we have available, this should get us a few years until we can look at our culinary program as a whole, because they do have some other customer service hospitality training that they would like to start incorporating, which brings a whole lot of other issues that we would want to address and do it well.
So right now, they utilize three different rooms, three different classrooms, but they only have one traditional fax lab. So the idea would implement a second one, and then like to Stacy's point, they would still be able to do the other, the other things.
Okay.
I, so on slide three. So, leading up to tonight, where has this recommendation come from? Based on what input?
So we met with, with Matt, with the principal, with Kathy Funston, with Sarah Noble. Chris has been working with the team as well, trying to move things forward. And then Dave and I met with them. We went through, and also Amy Petrowski as far as special ed director, because our fax is down there in a shared space.
Yep.
So we examined, okay, what are our needs? What are the needs that need to be addressed moving forward, both special ed as well as within the fax area and addressing the lab space? Created that criteria, and then we started working through what space seems viable that can meet a lot of these solutions. What we're really asking for is to restore space that used to be a fax lab with eight kitchens, that was there in the early 90s.
Sure. And I guess, while it is very obvious that this project is needed, and I'm glad to hear that all of that work has already been done, because typically with a facility project of this size, this board needs to understand those details, and we need to see those details in a, in a presentation before any recommendation comes forward. 1.25 million dollars in the Vision 191 effort would have been broken down with visuals, with details about space, with a map of the space. We would receive that information, then we would be asked for the, for the financial piece. And I, I feel like this is a cart before the horse conversation, and we really need to, we really need to stick, again, it's very obvious, the work has already been done, so it should be relatively simple to pull that information together for a presentation to the board, in addition, bringing the community along. 1.25 million dollars is a lot. Where is the funding going to come from? All of those details need to be documented and presented to the board.
So the, one, when the board was approving like for Division 191, that was just a concept drawing. None of that stuff had gone before the state for the review and comment. It wasn't the final draw-ups. We can show you the rough draft of the lab that we're putting back in, and that's kind of what the picture is with that. We did do a costing from what the project would look like. The funding piece, we are not asking the community for a bond, we're not asking, going back in that direction. With the sale of the outlaw that you have here, that in and of itself could cover two-thirds of the cost.
Yep, and that's great. It's, it just, this is a significant project, and as a board, we should not be asked to approve the financial piece without understanding the space, the input. There's typically a guiding change document with something like this, you know, who the input was, who was responsible for it. I appreciate that all, I mean, it's wonderful that all that work has already been done, so it should be relatively simple for your team to pull all that together. If we don't get this presentation publicly, I worry that our community will wonder, well, what, you know, what is this money going for, and where is it coming? They need, they and we need to have something to look at, especially in our governance role.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Because I picked up on this previously in another conversation where we had started talking about this, you know, this space, and saying something about it being this lab previously. What happened to it that it now, it was not usable? You're saying it used to be this, it used to be a kitchen, it used to be whatever, so what happened to it that it's not anymore? That we have to do this project?
Somewhere within the early 90s, it was decided to remove the majority of the lab. There are still two, I believe, kitchen net type of spaces there that special ed uses. Then the classroom as a whole was divvied up to create office space that is being used in another, for, for a special ed. That's all I know, because this was 20-some years before I started working here. So, but when we pulled up the blueprints, the reason why we're looking at this space is because plumbing, venting, electric, a lot of those types of things fundamentally, we're hoping are still there or maybe usable, or at least we're not trying to break up concrete to run new plumbing. Because that's, that's a big piece of this, is the plumbing and the electricity as well as the vents. And if some of that stuff is already in place, that'll help a lot. So that's part of the reason why we landed on this space to use. But that is, that is one of the things going forward. We've had a number of conversations, both Dave and I are fairly new to the positions, is we do not want to break up 900 square feet of instructional space for short-term gains for like offices with drywalls. We are going to, that is not something we are going to do moving forward unless it's very clear as to, well, we won't do it. We'll use, we'll use modules, where are the office things? Yeah.
Modular furniture, cubicles.
Which can be put up and taken down without having to have construction needs for space if more office space is needed in the future.
So, so do, we don't, we do know or we don't know yet if this is, this stuff is there?
Well, again, some of these things, the cart for the horse is, part of it is, I won't know until we have some money to start working with to pull this stuff up and move forward with the project. We know by the blueprints, everything was there. Until we're able to actually start the construction and get a scope, it's kind of like, again, not TV night, but your HGTV, it's like, yeah, we bid on a house, and all of a sudden we have this foundation inspection, or something else starts coming up. Some of these things won't materialize until we break down the drywall and we get into the floor.
Well, and I think you might be confusing my ask, Stacy. Understanding that things can happen in construction, right? You, you pull up the floor and you discover something that's going to cost $10,000, $20,000. In July, in, was it July or August of 2014, before anything was even done, the board received general visuals, scope, you know, with of course the understanding that, you know, you're asking for 1.25 million dollars, are there going to be, you know, change orders? There might be, there might be differences. But we need to have, we need to have a sense, we and our community need to have a sense of what the project looks like, and it's, I'm not debating.
Oh, we're going to give you the information, you'll bring it.
Yep.
Yeah, because it's a typical fax classroom, a kitchen. Yep, so we can bring that for the next board meeting and the details. And the estimate is based on what a typical, in this day and time, a fax classroom. It's a fast classroom that we're basing it on. But as Stacy said, it depends once you kind of see what's behind there, because the plumbing is, that's the expensive part.
And who knows what the plumbing is?
Yeah.
So, you know, in our timeline, and again, I zoomed by really high, fast, the scope of work meeting and design development is scheduled for October. So what I'm kind of hearing is maybe move that up, and then once we have a little bit more from that meeting, you ask for the additional revenue.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a better process.
Switch to September and October. Yeah.
Yeah, so we can, we can work with that a little bit more. And again, just so that you know, this amount of money that we're requesting, the bulk of that will not come out of this budget year. Because the project won't be completed until after July 1st of 2025. So we have a number of different ways to offset this.
And I think also, the board needs to consider, this might be, you know, another work session conversation, rather than piecemealing facility revenue to death, we need to have a long-term plan, or at least a vision for how we want to use it, because it's not like it's a, you know, checking account expense where you just spend the money and, you know, a little bit of it here and there. I want to know that we're, that we're using our, the proceeds from facility sales intentionally, and that the board and staff are all on the same page.
So if you recall, that's one of my goals that you set for me.
I do, yes, I do.
So yes, that is absolutely right.
And this, my assumption is that this money is coming from there, so we're kind of, Stacy said it was coming from?
What I'm saying is, as far as the revenue, how it's going to be paid for, if we were to use the outlaw money, that would cover two-thirds of the cost. If you wanted to use your unassigned fund balance, you have around $26 million, I think, in that, maybe a little bit more. Also, depending on the type of things that we discover, Dave may be able to redirect some of his long-term facility maintenance money. Not enough to cover the whole project, it's new in that sense, but we are able to break this up in a number of different ways that we could fund this.
And I get that. I just, it's, it's, I was startled looking at this, because my assumption was that the part, in part, or most of it would be coming from facility proceeds. And we haven't, this board hasn't had that conversation yet.
That's one option. You have fund balance, you, depending on what we find, we can use long-term facilities money, it's allowable under that. No, so that's just one of the options.
Okay.
I find myself agreeing with Director Alt. I do think we need to have that conversation before anything is approved.
Yes, for sure. I did have one tangentially related question, I guess, and that's given the numbers, the, kind of the number of students that are wanting to be involved in these courses, what's our, this staffing situation look like a year from now, two, three years from now, once this project is completed?
Well, currently, they're moving a lot of staff around to the different classes to kind of make this work a lot of rotating. Our staffing allocation for the building is based upon the total enrollment and what it would take to cover it. So at some point, Principal Sandoval would have to say, you know what, I'm up to 800, 900 students that are enrolling in fax. Then he's going to have to look at that and say, okay, if I have this many students enrolling here, where are they coming from? So he may reduce FTE allocations from his overall for those classes and reassign to this, and then hire a fax teacher to cover, based upon, again, registration and needs.
Right. Because it's a great program, I know we've had some very good experiences at some of the events where we've, they've prepared food for us. I can definitely attest to how high quality the program is, and we just want to make sure it's adequately staffed to maintain it.
Yep. And again, what we're looking for at this point in time is to address the registration in the fax lab space, not the whole culinary pathway program. That gets into a little bit more.
Yeah, that comes after the other conversation.
Yes. That's a good clarification also, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Our final item is to move to a closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D.05, subdivision 3C, to discuss a purchase proposal related to the sale of Sioux Trail Elementary School. Is there a motion to move to this closed session for preliminary consideration of the, for sale?
So moved?
Moved by Director Alt. Second advice, Director Webb, is there any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of course may. Thank you. The time is now 7:52. We will now move to the HR conference room for the closed session. And return to the desk when we are finished.
I was still here to say something, and I was like, is she going to say something?
Thank you. The time is now 7:52. We will now move to the HR conference room for the closed session, and return to the desk when we are finished.
I was still here to say something, and I was like, is she going to say something?
a purchase proposal for the Sioux Trail Elementary location. During that session, the board decided to give direction to Dr. Battel and staff to move forward with a counterproposal, and they will do so shortly. And with that, we have concluded tonight's scheduled agenda items, and therefore we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.